I call this meeting of the Planning Commission to order. Would everyone please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. I want to welcome everyone here and everyone who's watching at home. Briefly go over our agenda for tonight. First we'll have our consent agenda, which consists of the minutes of the August 27th meeting. Then we'll have a public hearing on the rezoning of 704 and 708 Southwest Walnut. And then finally, we'll have a PUD final site plan design review for the Oaks at Woods Chapel, Lot 1. Items 4 and 5 have been requested that they be removed from the agenda, so we will do so. And we'll hear those at some later date whenever they're ready. Would like to remind everybody of the procedures for a public hearing. First off, I will open the public hearing, ask the attorney for exhibits, get staff comments. The applicant will make a presentation. Then we'll hear witnesses in favor, witnesses opposed, and then we'll bring it back up here for discussion. That said, let's move on to the consent agenda.
Will move to approve.
Second. You have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes have been approved. And we'll move now to the public hearing on 708, 704 Southwest Walnut. I open the public hearing. Mr. McDonald.
Mr. Chairman, the city has eight exhibits. Number one is a staff report with attachments. Number two is the affidavit of publication in the newspaper. Number three is the application with attachments. Number four is the 185-foot notification map. Number five is a list of names and addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site. Number six is a copy of the letter sent to those property owners. Number seven is Title IV, Land Use Section, Blue Springs Code of Ordinances. Number eight is the 2003 comprehensive plan. Those are all of the exhibits the city would offer into the record at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Mr. Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. Before you this evening is a request to rezone two properties on Walnut Street near 7 Highway. The addresses are 708 and 704 Southwest Walnut Street. The current zoning, again, it is in the downtown zoning district. The current zoning is T3 suburban, and they're requesting to modify that to T5 urban center. Again, it's lots 1 and 2 of the Dodson subdivision. The total acreage is just over 4 tenths of an acre. And just a little background on it, again, just bringing everybody back up to speed with the Downtown Development Code, Downtown Zoning District. The urban center zoning that they're requesting to be rezoned to is a denser mixed-use type development. Again, typically more of a commercial, mixed with some residential. For example, Main Street core, Commercial Core, is T5. So where we're located now, just north of us on Main Street, is T5 zoning. As you know, there's some commercial with residential above. That's kind of a traditional type, old-fashioned, as it were, downtown Commercial Core. It is consistent with the neighboring properties. There's the KFC immediately to the east and sou- yeah, immediately to the east and north. And then immediately to the east of these properties is also the Valero Gas Station and Convenience Store. So it's kind of a transition from the more residential to the west on Walnut to the more Commercial Corridor strip along 7 Highway. So with that, rather than going into all the other detail here, staff is in agreement with the request and is supportive of the request to rezone. And as noted here, there are two staff comments with the rezoning request. It is consistent with the comprehensive plan, the future land use map. And one property is currently used for commercial retail. And both properties are adjacent, as noted, to other commercial uses. And again, the applicants, one property in particular is looking to actually reopen commercial use that had been there previously. So even though they're more residential in nature, the type of structures there, the actual uses intend to be more in fitting with the T5 zoning. So I'll stand for any questions.
Are there any questions for Mr. Allen?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Ms. Allen, would you please remind us what type of businesses can go in on that, please?
In T5?
Mm-hmm.
A long list of them, of which I do not have in front of me.
Those that are excluded maybe would be the easier way to go.
That is also a long list.
Oh, okay.[329.71][329.71](Laughter).
No, very good questions. It's more consistent with general business. Again, I'm not meaning to be evasive intentionally, but T5 is more, as you can see here on the map, there's GB zoning immediately to the east. And so it's more the traditional retail commercial. But because it is downtown with the T5, there's opportunity for some mixed use, as noted, like residential above retail, for example. That's not allowed in GB per se. But, you know, wouldn't allow, you know, used car sales or anything like that.
That's where I was headed.
Exactly.
To be sure that we're not putting in a car fix-it garage or something along those lines.
Exactly. And again, the intended use, I'll defer to the applicants to explain kind of what their intended use is. But they are, again, residential-type structures, so would intend it to be something more along the lines of like a home occupation.
They're going to leave the buildings that are there?
Correct.
I know one is actually a business at the moment.
Yes, exactly. And the other one is, again, going to fit into that nature. But no, it's a very good question. They could, I guess, feasibly theoretically raise the properties and construct something, but it would be, have to be matching with that downtown commercial type.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Allen.
Thank you.
Would the applicant like to come up and make a presentation?
There's several.
Well, you can all come up. You all, you will all have to be sworn in, whoever wants to speak.
(Inaudible)
My name is Mike Blum, 33702 East Roy Hara Road, it's in Buckner, Missouri, 64016.
Janine Blum, St. Andrews.
Okay. Great. We had a pest control business in our 708 Walnut for oh-
Seven years.
Seven, seven years or so. Our kids got married and went to college, so we moved our office to the house, or home, you know, our home. So since our house is up for sale now in Blue Springs, the people's bond is wanting to put in a hair care.
Beauty salon.
Yeah, beauty salon. And I guess this is, if we zone it back to commercial, then they would like to purchase the place to put that in there.
Appreciate the clarification.
Yeah.
Are there any questions? Okay, thank you. Would any of the other applicants want to speak? Okay. Just checking. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak in favor of this petition? Anybody who'd like to speak against? Seeing none, I'll bring it back up here for comments on the record. And seeing none there, I will close the public hearing. And any other comments, or I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I think this is pretty straightforward in regards to the recommendation by staff, as well as the testimony by the applicant. Therefore, I recommend that we recommend to the City Council approval of RZ-8-12-3621.
Second.
I have a motion and two seconds. Can we have a roll-to-all vote, please?
Commissioner Abbott?
Aye.
Commissioner Culpepper?
Aye.
Commissioner McCall?
Aye.
Commissioner Duhon?
Aye.
Commissioner Banks?
Aye.
Commissioner Trozen?
Aye.
Chairman Billups?
Aye. And we will recommend approval to the council. Thank you. We'll move on to item number three, which is the PUD final site plan and design review for the Oaks at Woods Chapel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. Before you tonight is a request for site plan and design review and a final PUD plan review for Lot 1 at the Oaks of Woods Chapel. The applicant is proposing a 13,225-square-foot retail building, and I think it's no secret that it is a CVS. And the building is also proposed to have a drive-through pharmacy included with it. Property is zoned for general business, and this is kind of a long-awaited development, so I'm sure it's not unfamiliar to you all. I did provide a background history on page 3 of 11, and I won't go through it all other than to say that the Planning Commission did approve a preliminary plat and recommend approval of a PUD concept plan in July of 2012, and the City Council moved forward to approve that concept plan in early August, again, of 2012. The land use, and I am on page 4 of 11, the land use for this particular property, it's situated at the northwest corner of Woods Chapel Road in Valley View. It contains approximately 2.14 acres. And again, of course, as we've already stated, the land use is for retail, commercial. is stated in the staff report as Northeast 36th Street, and that isn't exactly correct. The, there's a private drive. That is. This drive that runs from Woods Chapel Road, which runs along here, to Northeast 36th Street. And within that private drive are both of the accesses to CVS Pharmacy. So technically, they're direct accesses from the private drive, but to get to the private drive, you would have to access from either Northeast Woods Chapel Road, I'm sorry, Northwest Woods Chapel Road or 36th Street. Circulation on the site, when we looked at the site, obviously, the vehicular access is very good, and it is certainly in keeping with the PUD plan, concept plan, as well as the Woods Chapel Road improvements and Valley View improvements. So when we looked at circulation, we were more focused on pedestrian circulation to and from this site, which we believe will be utilized quite a bit in this area, as well as bicycle traffic. As you can see, they did provide a pedestrian access from Northwest Woods Chapel Road. That is the access that extends across through here, this portion of the site. And we also asked for an access that would come off of Valley View, and because of the grades on Valley View, the chosen access was placed right at the corner of Woods Chapel Road and Northwest Valley View, and that would be this access there. We are, as a condition of approval, suggesting that they put in two bicycle racks, a minimum of two bicycle racks, and that those be placed up near the building. The parking is provided on page both 4 and 5 of 11. For the pharmacy itself, they're required to have 66 and are proposing 73, so they meet the parking requirement. The landscape requirement, they are requesting an alternative compliance landscape plan. Their landscaping, their open space landscaping, and their parking lot landscaping. The buffer landscaping along Valley View are all, either meet or exceed the ordinance requirements. The landscaping along Woods Chapel Road has been reduced. I will allow the applicant to discuss that request. It has to do with visibility. And it should also be noted that within the parking lot landscaping, one of the requirements within that is that they provide 70 percent of the plant units be large deciduous trees, and they do not meet that requirement. With your packet, I believe you did get a letter from the applicant explaining the justification for the alternative compliance landscape plan. And again, I know the applicant is anxious to, is anxious to discuss that with you as well. The applicant can perhaps clear up some confusion when they get up here, but either way, they will, they will exceed the number of plant units required overall for the development. The question simply is, are they planting any trees along that right-of-way, or are they leaving that all up to the city and the street trees? Or are they planting some trees, and then the city will plant the street trees? The calculation that's provided in the chart assumes that they were planting five trees. The assumption that I was making prior to seeing their presentation tonight was that, color is not coming out well here, these five trees would be planted by the applicant. These six trees are planted as part of the Woods Chapel Road project. The six trees closest to the roadway are definitely within the plan for the Woods Chapel Road project, so those trees will be planted. In reviewing quickly their presentation, it appears to me that those are the only trees that they are planting along Woods Chapel Road or that will be planted. If that's the case, it reduces the number of excess plant units that they have from Stormwater detention is noted in the report. I will tell you, the final plat has been submitted. The Planning Commission will see that at your next meeting in October. And along with that final plat came the stormwater report. I'm betting that Cesar hasn't had time to completely review that report, but certainly prior to that hearing, he will have had time. And they will have to finalize that, and it will have to be approved by Public Works prior to the final plat being recorded. This particular project, being similar to Adams Dairy Landing in that it is a PUD with multiple uses, multiple retail uses, will be required to do a master sign plan for the overall development. I am told by the developer that the master sign plan is near complete and will be submitted. And when they do, that master sign plan will match what CVS has proposed in their drawings. And you will consider that at that time. On page 8 of 11, there's a brief description of the building, but in deference to the presentation being provided by the developer, I will let him discuss, discuss the building. It's fairly contemporary in its design, and again, we will let him speak to that. Staff is recommending approval, both the site plan and design review and the PUD final plan for Lot 1. There are 14 conditions that are being proposed with that approval. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Are there any questions for Mr. Hawley?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, so did I understand that, that the proposed overall complex, the development, this master signage will be dictated then by CVS's signage?
Not necessarily. They've looked at CVS, they've reviewed CVS's signage as proposed, and they will incorporate that signage into their overall sign plan, but it won't necessarily dictate the overall signage, primarily because of the different types of uses that are going in there. For instance, it won't make sense for a smaller building to have larger signs, so they will reduce that for the smaller buildings, restaurants, that sort of thing.
Yeah.
CVS and the grocery store are the two largest users out there.
Okay. Ms. Banks?
I did have a question. You were proposing where the sidewalks were going to go for the pedestrian.
Mm-hmm.
Was there any consideration by the applicant to put a sidewalk closer to the 36th Street because of all the neighborhoods, people coming up, especially with bicycles? I mean, they're not going to go all the way around into the entrance.
There was consideration of that, and I'll let the applicant address it. And it had to do with the grades at the site along 36th Street and along Northwest Valley View, and how that sidewalk would have to be cut through there in order to do it, and that's why they brought it around to the corner. But I will tell you, yes, there was discussion. Our initial hope was that that access would be back more along 36th Street, so that people entering from the neighborhood to the west would be able to come there. And we really feel like there will be a lot of bikers and walkers that will come from those neighborhoods that way. But they will also come from, from across the street as well. So given the grades that were being proposed out there, this was, this was the better location, and I'm sure that the applicant will discuss that as well.
Because otherwise, the neighbors will make their own grade, their own sidewalk.
They will. They will. And that is a concern of mine. I mean, I, I believe that they will take the shortest route between two places, and they will not be concerned with the grade. They will cut through.
Right.
That's what they do.
And I have one more question.
Sure.
Please clarify with me the trees. You were talking about, you were, and I didn't have my paper ready, when you were talking about how many, I guess it's on page 6 of 11. Is that the page that you were referring to? Because of the-
Yes.
Alternative plan?
Yes. On page 6 of 11, the chart that provides the total number of plant units is provided.
Right.
And as you can see, along Woods Chapel Road right now, there are 51.5 plant units less than is required. But because their parking lot landscaping, their open space landscaping, and the buffer along Valley View are in excess of what is required, the end result then is that they're proposing 99.5 plant units overall, more than is required for the site. However, if they are not putting in the five trees along Woods Chapel Road and they're counting on only the city's, the city's street trees do not count towards their landscape requirement. So you instantly have to subtract 75 points from the 99.5, because I counted those five trees as being trees they were proposing to plant, knowing that the city's planting six along the right-of-way. Does that make sense?
So right now, your calculation on the, on the Woods Chapel Road includes their five trees?
Yes, it does.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions?
Mr. Chair, I have one.
Yes, Ms. McCall?
I know it's codes, but why so many parking spaces? 73?
73 is being proposed by the applicant.
Yeah, I was, I noticed in here that you didn't, they didn't address the stormwater detention, but I was just wondering, why so many parking spaces? So I'm kind of curious to see the stormwater detention and then the landscape of how they're going to do that.
The, the stormwater detention really will be taken care of through a master stormwater plan that goes beyond this site, to be quite honest with you. They will eventually be piping the stormwater all to a larger area that runs through a culvert underneath Woods Chapel Road, and it's a wetland area, and it's been out there for a long time.
Has it, okay.
The reason for their numbers of parking spaces is simply it's what CVS desires for parking. It exceeds our ordinance requirement.
Right, okay.
It's what CVS desires.
I might also chime in on the, I think I ask about parking spaces constantly, but that seems to be the pattern with all of the larger developments. They all want more parking spaces than what's actually the basic requirements are.
Right. Okay, thank you.
It's a retailer requirement, but-
Are there any other questions?
And I'll stop at that.[1438.83][1438.83](Laughter).
Are there any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hawley.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Brian Grass. I'm with Cedarwood Development Company, and I'm joined tonight with Robert Taylor, who is with Premier Civil Engineering, who is the civil engineer on this project. And we are the developer in this region that is proposing to build the new CVS Pharmacy in this development. One point of clarification, I know Mr. Hawley was very thorough in his presentation, and they talked about developers in different roles. Want to make a distinction that what our development role is for the CVS Pharmacy development of the CVS site itself. There is a master developer headed up by Mr. Dan Carr, who's appeared before this commission a number of times. He's handling much of the larger project, infrastructure, stormwater detention, those types of items. And so I just wanted to make that distinction before we started here. My presentation tonight will be specifically about the CVS site. Mr. Hawley was very thorough and good in his presentation. I may be a little redundant, and I'll apologize ahead for that, but basically, we're appearing before the Planning Commission tonight for site plan, design review approval, PUD final approval, and the alternative compliance landscape approval. Little bit about the project. We are proposing a new CVS store. This is not a relocation of an existing store within the city or surrounding area. This will be a brand-new CVS Pharmacy. 13,225-square-foot, single-story building, including a pharmacy, 10,500 square foot of retail, and 1,000 square foot of new pharmacy. That pharmacy also has a double drive-through window. That drive-through is only for pharmacy use, pickup, and drop-off, drop-off of prescriptions and drugs through the pharmacy, not for retail sales of any type. Some people get that a little confused, but it's only for pharmacy use. Controlled access for the site from the main roads, 73 parking spaces in a double-triple configuration, and I'll explain that a little bit more. And the store is planned as a normal business hour store. It is not planned as a 24-hour pharmacy, as we do have in some other locations. Talking about our overall project schedule, this has been a long time coming, and I appreciate all the help of staff and everybody behind the scenes getting us to this point. Following Planning Commission approvals, once those come, we will move into our construction document phase. We hope to have permits in hand by the end of 2012, so we could start construction March 1st of 2013 and finish right around July 15th of 2000, I should say 13, my apologies. July 15th of 2013, and open for business by August 13th of 2013, which should be about 30 to 45 days behind the public roadway improvements UMO that are working on. So we don't want to coincide with any construction, so there's a big tie-up with everything going out there. So I think it'll time out nicely. You'll have all your improvements done, we'll have a brand-new store to open, and then we'll go from there. A little bit about the site design. As Mr. Hawley pointed out, we do have a controlled access from the public roadway through the construction of a private driveway between Woods Chapel and 36th Street. We have two access points to our site from that private driveway. That private drive will be a shared access drive that will eventually have curb cuts to the development directly north of us when that gets proposed. So that will be a shared access driveway between us and the property to the north. Again, double drive-through for the pharmacy. It's only pharmacy use only. This is it? It is. We've segregated the drive-through traffic from the access drive through the use of a landscaped island here that I think will not only help the traffic and not intermixing between the two, but will help soften and shade the side of the building with some nice landscape and buffer zone. Triple-double parking field. One thing that is unique to CVS is what we call a triple parking field, and what we have found that our customers, especially a lot of times, people have come to us for convenience- convenience in times when they just want to get in and get out, then we have sick kids with them. It is an easy way for a customer to pull in and pull right back out without having to go into a backup mode and back into traffic here. It's something that CVS designs into all their stores, and it's a little bit unique about the way we run our business. All the service areas for the building are along the backside of the building, and they will be properly screened and enclosed with masonry walls enclosures that'll match the building architecture proper. Landscape design, I think Mr. Holly did a very good job in explaining what's going on here. We are asking for an alternative compliance plan for along Woods Chapel. Quite frankly, I think, Jim, there was a little bit of a revision, but you are correct, we will be providing approximately five trees to six trees along Woods Chapel. What is not shown here are the public street trees that will be planted by the city as part of their public roadway improvements. What we're trying to do here is balance the needs and the intent of the code as well as the needs and intent of CBS. We are trying to keep respectable view corridors open for the building and without basically hiding it behind a wall of trees. We feel that with our plantings, not only are we planting trees along Woods Chapel, we do have various bushes and other landscape features in conjunction with the street trees here. I think will give a nice landscape appearance to the project as a whole. We have talked and worked to develop a feature landscaping element here at the heart corner of Valley View and Woods Chapel. This is where we tie in our pedestrian access from the two main roadways, as well as a landscape feature here with sidewalk areas. And this is where we will integrate our main signage for our project, which will be presented to the commission under separate, under a separate application at a future date. The other thing here is the heavy landscaping. I know the comment was made about the pedestrian access from 36th Street down to the project. I don't know if you've been out, I just went out just before the meeting here, and it's sort of shaping up as to what this is going to look like. The finished floor and main elevation of the project as a whole are pretty much in keeping with what's going on here at the corner, but as Valley View goes toward the west, the elevation goes up, and 36th Street is up quite a bit higher. You can see here, all these lines really close together represent the grading lines here in order for us to meet our grades and keep our access. So we have roughly a ten-to-twelve-foot drop here between 36th Street and the project as a whole. So that's, in order to get a sidewalk down that grade and meet ADA and meet all the other requirements, as well as something that's safe, that's not going to ice over during the wintertime here, you'd end up with a switchback will probably take out the whole hill in order to comply. We felt it better to discourage that is to really heavily landscape this slope with various shrubs, trees, and other plantings along the backside, and instead, at the recommendation of planning, to construct a sidewalk along 36th to tie in the Valley View. And here, where the grades are more able to accommodate pedestrian access in ADA, we would then allow access to the site. The ability also exists here that a pedestrian come along 36th can come here along this drive-through. We will provide a walk here that then can tie into the main sidewalk of the building as well. So we really have pedestrian access on three sides. It's really a matter of the grading and safety on why we avoided it in this area. Had we been able to do it without further diminishing the number of plantings and landscape on the site, we would have done that, but we felt this is the best balance. Again, a little bit of a colored rendering. You can see here how we heavily landscape Valley View and along this back, 36th Street. Landscaping that helped defines the drive-through lanes from the main traffic ways, and then featured landscape here at the corner, and then our trees that we will add along Woods Chapel in conjunction with the either five or six trees that'll be planted by the city. Quickly, building design. One of the requirements or one of the wishes of staff early on in the process was to really define the corner of this building with some sort of tower element or something that really spoke to entry and spoke to the main corner of the building. What we've done here is actually construct a top tower element with a raised roof section. That is our main entryway. Then we take the parapet and we step down as we move to the backside of the building to help give the roof lines some visual interest. We do have a very heavy cornice line along with intermediate brick pilasters. We have incorporated some architectural detailing on the masonry walls, and some of the signs you see here are basically what you will see under our separate submission on our signage This is a architectural rendering of what the building would look like. It does sort of give some indication here. Trees are a little sparse along Woods Chapel, but then very quickly picks up and gets heavy along the backside of the building where the grades are more pronounced. That concludes my presentation, and should anybody have any questions of either myself or Rob on a technical nature, we're here to answer your questions.
Are there any questions for the applicant? Mr. Rosen?
Sir, if you could go back to the site design slide. The drawing you're showing us in regards to the drive-throughs is different than the drawing that's in our packet. And what I mean by is this looks like there's a single lane then would go to the double versus the one in our packet looks like they're double lane going to that double.
That drawing's wrong. We have an old slide here from my engineer, I'll blame my engineer. What you have in front of your packet or in your packet will be the proposed, what we're asking for approval on.
Okay, so then my follow-up question then, is there any consideration instead of both of the sets of lanes going from east to west, changing so that one lane goes east to west, one goes west to east? Because if they, if you had the alternate, you know, somebody's going to end up going all the way around the building depending upon which entrance you come in, versus if you had, you know, lanes that were in those different directional's that would reduce than going all the way around the building? Does that...
Well, I understand what you're saying. Quite frankly, that's the first time I've ever been asked that question, and I've done a lot of these. We're really set up with the double drive-through where the main drive-through interfaces with an actual drive-through window and a pharmacist, and then the remote lane has a overhead vacuum delivery system. If we were talking about that sort of arrangement, now what we would have to do is make that canopy actually larger, and quite frankly, I am not aware of a CBS in which we had ever done that. The reason that we try to keep this double lane is for what we call an escape lane, such that if somebody gets in a queue and decides they don't want to stay, it's wide enough to where two vehicles, and they can then go out and immediately make the right and leave the site.
Well, you could drive through it, too. If you didn't want to stay, you know, you could drive through it. But I see what you're saying as far as that. I'm just thinking, well, I'm the person who usually has to go all the way around the building because I come in the wrong entrance in regards to a pharmacy, and so I always wondered why they didn't have different directional as far as through those windows so that you basically keep the people who are going to go through the drive-through on the north side of the building versus unfortunately, some people will have to go all the way around.
It's a site planning point that I'm not prepared to answer in front of the commission tonight.
Could I ask a question?
Yes.
Are you planning on putting a pharmacy drive-through-only pointer down there right off of Woods Chapel?
Yeah, they're in our sign package that'll come under, we'll have on-site directional signs throughout the site that'll point to traffic toward the drive-through.
Is the pharmacy drive-through going to be to where anybody on the left or the right can pull up? Because if it's, I mean, I know it's going to be away the opposite of traffic flow, but if you're the passenger and I, go ahead, and I pulled up and I want to get in there...
No, it's set up to service only the driver's window from both vehicles.
Right. Okay.
So the first vehicle will pull up here and interface directly with the drive-through window at this point. A second vehicle would pull up out here, much like you do at a bank teller. You'll have a remote station that'll have a speaker on it, and they'll have a delivery vacuum tube system. But again, those are designed to be accessed directly from the driver's side of the vehicle only.
Well, my husband and I figured out a way to do it to where I get to it, and he can drive. So I just was thinking, if you're holding a, if you're driving, okay, thank you. One more thing can I ask?
Yeah, sure.
You're talking about really piling up landscaping there at Woods Chapel and Valley View. Is that what I understand you're making?
Well, I have Valley View and 36th.
Okay. Well, long ago, you were down here in the corner. At Valley View and Woods Chapel, right there where the little island is for the handicap, ADA, where the little island is? No, go toward the street, right there.
Yes.
On your other slide, you had it heavily landscaped.
I think this slide's...
Okay, right there.
Right.
Now, you take it in consideration the street lights and the people walking in. So on the other slide, though, you show very little landscaping. Go ahead.
Just as a point of correction, the landscape plan, if you go back one, that is not the correct landscape plan. That's a landscape plan that was originally submitted to the city, and then CBS had their, excuse me, visibility concerns, and so the landscape plan that is now proposed is the one that is shown in this color. And you do have it, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Well, the landscaping along that, again, right where your, the signage is, the main signage is going to be, that's all shrubbery and stuff, so that's all low landscaping, that's not...
That is correct.
So that's not going to block streetlights or anything like that?
No.
Okay, no, I just...
You're right, I apologize, that's my mistake.
All right, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I just want to clarify, Mr. Holly, the plan that we have in this information we just received that says landscape design, which is the slide right before this one, that is the one that is no longer correct.
That's correct.
The one that we have in our packet is correct, and it shows the trees basically evenly spaced while the incorrect one shows them clustered at each end.
That's correct.
Thank you.
The trees will be evenly spaced, that's the...
Yeah, this colored landscape plan is a true representation of what we're presenting here, which matches the landscape plan within the staff report.
Are there any other questions? Okay.
Oh, I did have one more place. There was mention of the size of the trees. Are we planting trees that are smaller than what our ordinance requires?
No, excuse me, no. The trees that they're planting meet the ordinance requirement, but what was a bit different is the requirement for large deciduous trees within the parking field itself, and they are proposing to reduce that from seventy percent down to something less than seventy percent, probably closer to, I think, thirty percent is what I had figured out.
And that's not an issue?
From our perspective, given the number of trees that surround the property and other areas, that is not an issue that we have a lot of concerns with.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, anything else? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any comments?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a comment, having lived over in that area for all these years, that we're very going to welcome a CBS pharmacy, we'll welcome any businesses over there. So that's why I know when they come in that will be, they'll be welcome to our neighborhoods. So, thank you very much.
Anything else?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Golep.
I would make a motion for approval of the PUD final and site plan design review for eight twelve, thirty-five ninety-one, subject to the staff recommendations.
I'd gladly make that second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries, and site plan has been approved. And as I said earlier, items number four and five have been removed from the agenda at the request of the applicant, and we'll get to those at some point in the future. And we move on to other business. Mr. Allen, did you have something you wanted to talk about?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next Tuesday is already October second, hard to believe, but so a week from tomorrow night is the next Eastern Jackson County Planning Commissioners Training Event, which will be at the newly remodeled, I guess, Mid-County Public Library Branch on Twenty-four Highway, essentially across from Truman Library. So the City of Independence is hosting this next event, and we'll be discussing kind of the work to date and then future efforts of the Mid-America Regional Council's Forty Highway Corridor Planning Process. So we're looking forward to having some of their consultants there, mark staff there as well, so kind of have some presentations and then also some dialogue with them. So kind of continuation of the Forty Highway planning that this group kind of started in earnest last summer, that's actually coming to some final conclusions over the next few months here with Mid-America Regional Council's planning process. So it's next Tuesday the second, five-thirty to eight type thing again, there'll be, you know, light dinner and then presentations and discussion. And if there's a date, Jim, or to get RCPs back tomorrow?
Tom hasn't given us a date.
Okay, I'm sure as soon as possible this week.
Soon as possible.
I'll let Karen know, and she'll take a head count, and we'll get that over to Independence, but I'm sure, they didn't give us the final red flag warning today, but I'm sure that will be coming here in the next couple of days.
I'll bet you it will be no later than Friday, maybe Thursday one.
Yeah, I'm sure.
The person who operates the restaurant inside the library will want it.
So yes, yeah, by Friday certainly the latest, but the sooner the better would be great, next Tuesday the second.
Can you send us an email with the address so that we can plug it into our...
Sure, yeah, there's, I think we can get that.
Whatever type of machine we have, we can sure we get there?
A good point, yes. It's not something, I guess, folks here from Blue Springs normally would go to, but...
Tom will be sending us the agenda this week, and I thought once we get that agenda, then we'll put a map together and have that emailed out to every, to all of the commissioners. So you'll get both the agenda and the map, and I'm thinking, Tom said he'd get that out early in the week, so I'm thinking we should get it tomorrow.
That would be terrific.
Possibly Wednesday.
Is there any other business that we need to discuss this evening? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
I'm adjourned.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
We are adjourned.